Okay, we will call this board meeting to order Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 at 5:15. Roll call, Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corpey.
Here.
Bruce Ravine.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Skokse Deech, not here?
She's here.
Oh, she's here!
She's online.
Oh, she's online, sorry, I didn't see you over there. (laughing). Joanne Smith, here. Beth?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
All right, so the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's too much talking. All right, and approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
A second.
I have a motion by Bruce and a second by Jess to approve the motion, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, open forum, Elks Students of the Month. Anybody for?
March or April, I'm sorry. In the March meeting or the April meeting?
Oh, March, I guess March comes next. (laughing).
She's just trying to get through it.
Yeah.
Hey, we all agreed.
We did. Tony's the only one that caught it.
Public open forum, I don't think we have anybody.
We do not.
Committee reports. Student rep, Joe and Max.
All right, first I'd like to start out this report by some, for some exciting news. Max Yusso and I will be sharing the role as school board representatives and co-authoring reports. Unfortunately, Max couldn't be here today, but he will join us for the next month.
Awesome.
So, February brings brighter days and exciting activities here at Falls High School as we celebrate both Black History Month and Mental Health Awareness Month. Recently, the student council organized a successful rose sale for Valentine's Day, selling thirty-four carnations and fourteen daisies, which raised a total of $100. Students from all grades also had a great time participating in the Valentine's Hearts game. The highlight of the month was the Stick It To Stigma event sponsored by Northland Counseling Center that aimed raising awareness for mental health. Teachers, staff, and students collaborated to spread the message through informative displays and classroom discussions. In support of this initiation, the boys hockey team faced against the Lake of the Woods Bears. The game not only raised significant awareness about mental health and its associated stigma, but also ended in a victory for our team. Additionally, Mrs. Lyons' classes won the contest and were rewarded with a pizza party for their efforts in promoting awareness. Looking ahead, Falls Elementary School will celebrate Dr. Seuss Week with fun dress-up days, volunteer leaders from high school, and a variety of engaging activities. This week emphasizes the importance of reading and encourages a love for among students.
Awesome.
And that's, that's everything I have.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I will be sharing the Falls Elementary report tonight for Ms. Tate. Period teacher conferences will be held at Falls Elementary on Wednesday, the 26th. Additionally, they will be hosting an open house for preschool and kindergarten that night. Online registration for preschool will be open for current families, starting at 8 o'clock and going until 4 o'clock on February 26th, and then at 4 o'clock it will be open for new families. Ms. Tate will be bringing updated numbers to the next school board meeting regarding current enrollment. And as Joe mentioned in his report, Dr. Seuss Week will be the first week in March, so stay tuned for more information on that. So, registration for next year's classes will start on Thursday, February 18th, through Monday, February 24th. Mr. Greewatz and I will be going to classrooms to explain the course offerings to all of our students, grades six through twelve, or eleven, I guess. Twelve graders won't have to worry about it. And we just really want to spend some time clarifying offerings and options and just, you know, taking the time to have some discussions if they have questions. Additionally, we'll be hosting a family registration night on Wednesday, February 26th, for those that wish to come in and get assistance with selecting courses. We invite parents to come, we also invite students to come. And we're really excited to be offering a selection of electives. Some of, just some of them I'll mention. We have career exploration courses, STEM, college and the schools courses such as Intro to Education and Communications. We are very excited to roll out our work-based learning program, and we will be requiring personal finance.
Oh, excellent.
Starting in 10th grade, but it will be open to 11th and 12th graders next year. So, we will be hosting a Scholastic Book Fair on February 27th during the boys' basketball game between the Falls and Little Fork. Credits earned through the Scholastic Book Fair will be used for PBIS rewards and incentives for students. Our spring conferences are Wednesday, March 5th, from 5 to 8. Teachers will be sending out person invitations. And currently, in terms of enrollment, we are at plus three.
Cool.
Good.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Oh, Community Ed, right now we're really busy in Community Ed. We have, last year because of the lack of snow, we had to re, we had to cancel our Snow Bill Safety class. And so, we, the DNR officers have been really busy this last month with training Snow Bill, or officers for Snow Bill. So, we had to push back our Snow Bill Safety class until it's March 15th. But because we canceled last year and now we have classes here, it's been crazy with parents calling about getting their kids into Snow Bill Safety. So that's coming up. We also have a drivers' training coming up. We are offering a competitive summer softball from eighth through 12th grade girls. We also have, early June, we also have a basketball camp that some of our teachers, and then we have a teacher from Little Fork that are coming up to do a camp. They've done that in the past in the Rennett Park this year. We have, for adults, we have our sourdough bread making class in March. Our dog obedience class is coming, and then when we had that really cold day, we had to cancel our defensive driving class, and now we rescheduled that. So, that's calling everybody that had registered, and so that's coming up. We have locked in, the circus has locked in their date, and we have signed the contract with them. They're coming up to set up May 8th, and the shows will follow that weekend. They really praised our staff again. I got an email from the owner of the company praising how our staff, we had a lot of problems last year in between the city and our janitorial staff. They were right on it, so they, they really appreciate that and we're looking forward to coming up. We've had some heating issues in the pool. Hopefully that's all figured out now, and, so I will be doing the pool schedules for the next months because we have, for the next couple of months, early because we have pool parties coming. We have had local agencies reach out to do training. Usually, the Border Patrol and the park, I think, are going to try to use our pool together instead of using it separately. Our local camps, camp coach and the girls' camp also will use it, and they will train our lifeguards. They do a lifeguard class, so I want to get that, the calendars for pools all set so that we can plug them in. And I did talk to maintenance today, Cory down there, about, we will be down for sprinklers that are going to be installed, but we're also going to try to do some maintenance that hasn't been done in the last couple of years. One is painting our lockers and locker rooms. They're in really dire need of some attention, and so we figured this is probably going to be the best time to get it done. So, we are trying to get that all organized so that we're, hopefully we can shut down the pool and everything we can get done during that time. Any questions?
When did you say the pool's going to be shut down? Or don't you know yet?
We're working on that.
Okay.
We're working on that. We met today.
So, before I get started, some of this will be review for you from our work session that we had, but I felt it was really important to take time together today to highlight some of the areas that we talked about so the community knows what we're working on behind the scenes. I just thought I didn't do a spell check, and I hope I got it right. But before I also, I want to recognize Jeremy Anderson. He is our transportation lead, and he went in yesterday during a Sunday, Monday, the day was closed, school was closed, but he went in and started all of our buses to make sure that our, our kids could get to school safe safely this morning, and he and his team were there early this morning to make sure the fleet was able to get out and get our, our kids to school safe. So, they, the leads have been doing a phenomenal job. They've been really helping with the school grounds and facilities, and we've been holding bi-weekly meetings and monthly meetings as a facilities team in addition to our, our facilities leads group. So I just really want to give that group a shout out. They've been fantastic. So, as we talk about facilities, what I really want to update you on right now is, if you're not on social media or in the email chain, we have had some significant issues with Bronco Arena in addition to our rooftop units for heating. So I've been collaborating with our, our two lead vendors on partnering with the school district for the three of us to come together to really problem solve some of the areas that have gone maybe without maintenance that really need to be brought up to date and really in compliance. So, I do want to recognize though that the work that has had to be done under some of the emergency things that have come up have gone quite nicely. The teams and the community businesses that have showed up to help support the district have really been efficient in their practices, and we were able to really open the facilities quicker than I originally had anticipated. But we've got some work to do in our facilities, and we are mapping out a strong plan and what this is going to look like for the next year before we really get into the referendum construction to make sure that we are in maintenance phase, not reaction phase. So recently, we had IEA come and visit our site, and they are the Institute for Environmental Assessment, and they come approximately four to six times a year. And what they do is they look at our district buildings and they look at compliance factors. So they look, they test our water, they come in and they look at our, our brake systems and our lifts out at the bus garage, they look at the iWash, iWash stations, they talk about PPE and hazardous disposal and what our plans look like. And they just spent a significant amount of time here over the last four months. And International Falls Schools, we know we have aging buildings, we have some work to do, but we also have some very minor fixes that need to happen quite rapidly. So that would be updating our PPE, updating our iWash stations. So, what we have done is, I am working with that group that has been working with the district, and what we have developed is a compliance roadmap. So we're just looking at really a one-year plan, how we can get everything up to date so when they start moving forward and coming visiting our site, we're again in maintenance phase. So just know that once I have finalized that compliance roadmap with IEA, I will push that out to the board so you know what will be happening each month and in what department. So it could be chemicals in our science department, it could be iWash stations, because we also want to make sure that we're compliant, but also as we get ready to implement new construction, we want to make sure that everything is, is spot on. So, the design and the roadmap for what the expectations are by this group that we're in compliance, as a, compliance as a school district. They also lead the safety committee, and that's not the safety and security committee that we talk about, school safety. So when we talk about the locks on the doors or emergency plan, it's really about what does our school safety plan look like if there was a hazardous or environmental catastrophe and/or just an isolated incident, so if there was a gas leak or something like that. So we have some updates that we have to do on our safety committee, and what that looks like is we have, we have school administrators sit on that team, we have science teachers sit on that team, we have CTE people sit on that team. So we have all areas within the school district covered in addition to some of our maintenance team members. So they'll be joining that. We will be starting those with fidelity in the new school year, but that is part of the roadmap development and what the school safety committee will look like with IEA. And again, they are generally up four times a year. They've been up a little bit more due to some of the facility's needs, but I, I believe that will lessen as we create our expectation list. So ultimately, as you know, facilities is a priority for me as the school, school district superintendent, and really my goal is to get those Band-Aid fixes and the things maybe that have lagged a little bit longer and make sure that we're in compliance and long-term maintenance before we really start taking on newer, bigger projects and get ready for So the next thing, I'm just going to briefly talk about, the school board is going to get ready to have a work session with CISO. CISO spent a little bit longer than anticipated in our district audit, and so they're about a month behind where we need to be. Although, moving forward, we are in a pretty good position for short term, right? So, we are going to come together and have a work session, which means that as we get ready for short-term planning, I, I spoke to you a little bit about this, many districts across the state are getting ready for some big cuts. There's school districts in Wisconsin that are looking at $4 million cuts, there's school districts that are looking at half a million dollar cuts, $2 million cuts. There's some school districts that are even looking at statutory operating debt. So, one of the things that I spent some significant amount of time with CISO talking to is just looking at that short-term plan and that long-range plan. And the short-term, we're looking good as we get ready to close out the year. Right now, International Falls is not looking at any cuts at all, so the projections look good as we get ready to close out the school year. That being said, and this is the plant, this is the problem that's actually happening across the state, and we've seen a lot of legislation, and you're seeing a lot of people advocating at the, with legislation about enrollment. And I think we've had, that's been a huge topic of discussion for us as a school district, declining enrollment across the state and also where students are being educated at. So that's homeschool, that's going to other, online school districts, that's also has to do with online school. And right now, we're sitting at just under 200 students in our school district that do not attend this school district, which leads to some of the changes that we have to consider as we move forward as a school district in order to maintain existing student numbers in addition to how can we capture, recapture some of those students that do not attend our school district. And I truly believe we have a phenomenal staff in place, a talented staff, and I think we have some great opportunities to revisit programming, electives, in addition to how we do some of our restructuring throughout the school district. So, one of the things that we need to recognize is we have a significant number of retirees this year. So we're looking at that data in addition to, with CISO, we're looking at systematically how are we assigning the dollars that we are spending? Are they going to the right codes? So when we do that cost-benefit analysis, we have to also be looking at some of the structures and programming within our district, though it might be near and dear to our heart. Are we getting out of it that is, A, fiscally responsible, is it positively impacting our school district, and in the end, does it positively impact our students? Socially, emotionally, academically, and just that whole citizen component. So we're also going to be working with CISO on the audit recommendations in addition to creating that short and long-term plan for ISD 361. I personally am very optimistic because that's the ones that I look through. In addition to, I think the school district is excited about the collaborative feedback that we've had and the way that we're going to go moving forward. The next thing I want to talk to you about is, and I know some of you reached out to me today with questions regarding our American Indian education program. You have seen that come to a standstill for the last month and a half. As we know, teacher Tom Ballen has retired, a tremendous asset. He gave his heart and soul to ISD 361. He developed a really amazing American Indian education program. He is missed, and he will be missed, but it also results in the opportunity to revisit the program, what's gone well, and what changes need to happen to serve our American Indian students today and the programming that we offer. So Lisa, Principal West and Principal Tate and I, in addition to staff, in addition to other programs within the district, have really talked about what can our program look like and how can we revisit the offerings from a K-12 perspective and also meeting the requirements that we have to adhere to by the state. So, our team did some interviews, and we will be offering the position to Beth Slutinsky. She has brought forth some really incredible ideas to the program overall, and one of the things that I really appreciate is how we can revisit our offerings to our elementary students because that has been a big missing piece of the puzzle. So, one of the other areas that we need to revisit is our parent involvement meetings and getting our families back and engaged with our school community, but also engaging our school community, school community out within the, the homes and making sure not only that we're offering academic support, but we're also offering cultural supports. So, I'll be happy to ask, answer questions at the tail of this, but that is the direction we're going, and we'll have more information for you in the months ahead. Last, we'll have a robust budget presentation in April. CISO will be a part of that. We're looking at the work session to be held in March. So, as we get ready to talk a little bit more about the 25-26 school year, I do have some meetings that I have to have, and gathering some feedback from staff, from community members, in addition to looking at the data, looking at data from student enrollment to student performance benchmark assessments to MCA data. Tomorrow at the high school, Principal West and I will be spending time with the high school staff after school, really looking at the five-year MCA numbers throughout the district and really spending some time with staff talking about some of the variables that contribute to the performance of ISD 361 students. In addition, we're going to have greater conversations about the why students take the MCAs and how important it is for families to support that opportunity for students to take their MCAs. A lot of families don't know that if a, if a family opts out of taking the MCAs, that ultimately really results in a non-proficient score for our district. And so it's very important that when we start looking at our proficiency numbers, whether it's 58% or 89% in reading or math, any child or family that opts out of MCAs results in zero scores for our school district. So that data and that testing, though we don't teach to test, it's one snapshot that is critical in what the state sees, and it also helps us drive instruction and programming for our district. So, you know, we always tell families that if there is a struggle or a concern, please reach out to your building principals or reach out to me. Let's talk about how we can help support students through their testing process because we need them to take those tests.
Yeah, this is Rox, I gotta interrupt you, I'm sorry. Where does special end lie in?
The same would result in that, but for special accommodations, so anybody who receives special education services should reach out to their teacher and building principal, and we can help support that process.
Okay, so is there modified tests for the lower level?
If it's in their IP, it is, there is.
Okay, thanks.
So, in March, you will be getting an invite, especially those who sit on the academic advisory committee, I can't remember the exact name that we named it, but I opted to put a hold on the strategic plan roadmap with TeamWorks because I really needed to get my hands into the school district, look at data, gather some feedback from our stakeholders. So, the district has done a lot of work with TeamWorks in the past, and they have a really good foundational roadmap for the district's strategic plan. But with some of the current changes that we are going to be implementing in the future, it's important that TeamWorks comes back and we revisit that in addition to, we've got new staff, we've got new administrators, so we need to talk about what that roadmap is going to look like for the future and make sure that our stakeholders know what it says and the why behind it. What is our vision, what is our mission for ISD 361? In addition to also taking a look at what do we need to change or enhance in the plan that the district has developed in the past. So, they are coming to spend a half-day with us on-site. Our leadership teams will be invited to join us as long as we can find substitute teachers. We're going to do our best to have a handful of staff there because that is really important, that our staff are present in revisiting the strategic plan for the district. On the board agenda tonight, you are going to see a recommendation for a new CIST for ISD 361, and I'm trying to be thoughtful of the acronyms for Roxanne because people don't know what a lot of the educational acronyms mean. So CIST is our Student Information System, and right now the district uses Skyward. Skyward, it's the, the program that we have is very old, and one of the things that has happened as education has evolved is those systems have been updated and really become more efficient in practice. And we have the ability to streamline our system into a more current platform. In addition to, we're the only district in our region that is not able to be a member of ARC, which is the Arrowhead Regional Computer Consortium, and they offer the smart finance system, but they also, they also work with all the regional school districts. So, think of Ely, Cook County, St. Louis County, Little Fork, all the different school communities where everybody from the superintendents to the principals to our technology directors all come together and we train. We have the same, most of us have the same student information systems in addition to the smart finance platform. So they all are frameworks that talk to each other versus having these siloed programs that run together. And though it's a scary undertaking, you know, change is hard, I think, I believe in the end that the efficiency and the, how we're going to be able to, those systems are going to be able to talk to each other from putting out parent information to putting out staff information, we're going to be able to have the opportunity to have absent management systems. So, if there is a custodian that needs to take the day off, we don't have to have a person call, it'll automatically be automated and go out. So we're looking at making these systems all under one umbrella so they speak to other, each other. In addition, now International Falls will have the opportunity to join all other school districts at the table as they come together and talk about legislation, as they talk about training, as they talk about statutes, in addition to pushing out our teams of people so they can go to training and be updated and, and network with some of their colleagues. One of the bonuses in this agenda item is that, I know people are probably thinking dollar signs, this platform will be less expensive than what we're spending now. Awesome. So, next on the docket is a revision and alignment. I have taken off the board agenda recommendations for coaching, whether it's boosters or volunteer positions for coaching for the 25-26 school year. After speaking to our school district attorney, there are some changes that are coming out for state statutes in how we align booster funding to coaching positions. So, one of the things that our attorney recommended is that we take a look at our policies and procedures and really look at streamlining our systems to make sure all of our policies and procedures are aligned with the Minnesota State High School League in addition to the state statutes, because there's also an equity component that we have to be very cognizant of in how many coaches we align to one athletic group versus another. So, she is currently taking all that information, and she's going to help guide us in the changes that we need to make, so I'm holding off on moving those recommendations forward until we make sure that we're compliant. Next, we're talking a little bit, we talked about this at the retreat, is the school's layout and programming. Again, we're looking at deeper data. Some of the changes are going to be welcome, some of the changes are going to be paused for reflection, and some are going to be hard because sometimes it's hard to get away from the way we've always done it. And one of my recommendations will be just really looking at the mode of instruction in addition to the layout of our schools and our buildings. So, you know, really taking a deep dive into what is the elementary structure look like from preschool through fifth grade? What does middle secondary look like? We're kind of, though we have the middle school kind of targeted on one end of the building, really looking at the efficiency and layout of it, and then really making sure that when we look at a secondary model, that our, our high schoolers feel excited about the high school that they live and breathe in. So, the goal ultimately is to provide robust programming, but also to create an environment that all of these students and staff feel excited to go to each and every day. So the other thing we're taking a look at is really looking at our offerings at the ALC and that cost-benefit analysis because it's hard when the ALC is offsite. One of the things that I think is really important is our ALC students miss out on some of the elective offerings, and that is when you start talking about shop class and you start talking about fax or our online classes. So, in addition... So, in addition, we are also looking at opening an online school slash course offering. For right now, our ninth through 12th students at the beginning of next year. So, that would create the opportunity to create a hybrid model where students can take some classes onsite. And in our, with our teachers, but also have the opportunity to go to an innovation room. And they would be able to take an online class that is delivered through ISD 361. There's more information that will be shared out with you in March when I do a little bit more robust this as long. But when I share that information with you in March. But we're very excited about that because some of the, the offerings that are available are different languages. To fashion design, to introduction to healthcare. So, it's very exciting where we're going, but we have to work out those kinks yet. So, as we look at staffing and restructuring, it's really important that we gather feedback from our staff. I pushed out a number of surveys in addition to also spending time and offering one-to-one meetings and department meetings. I know Principal West has also done that as she's looked at expanding her electives and departments in her building right now. So, one of the things that I would say is that, you know, I want to give compliments where compliments are due. Is Principal West and our school counselor, Thane Grewatz, have, have been working really hard at getting ready to roll out the new programs and class offerings. So, they've done a phenomenal job and I think the kids and families are going to be really excited at what's coming for Falls High School. So, programming changes that I can tell you are happening for sure is the sixth grade classrooms. So, sixth grade classrooms are going to be moved back to having a homeroom teacher, so a core classroom teacher. There will be three sections, but they will have the opportunity to departmentalize. So, one teacher will become specialized in reading and writing. One teacher will become specialized in math. One teacher will become specialized in science and social studies. We'll also offer electives like PE and art. And I know Principal West is working on that. But one of the other components that we're looking at is what does the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, that intervention model look like? And so, we're still working out that area, making sure, A, our kids get what they need in standards that they may be lagging behind. But also, kids get what they need for enrichment. So, those kids who are proficient with their standards and their curriculum. And how can we move them to like an acceleration where they're challenged at a higher level? So, we're looking at what that design looks like and hoping to be able to offer some more intervention opportunities at the high school level. In addition, online courses for our high school students. And I would say some pretty exciting elective expansions for nine, 12 students. So, future updates that I can tell you about that are still on the docket that we're currently doing research in. Is we are looking at childcare for the district. And right now, what we're looking at exploring is offerings for after-school childcare, all-day childcare and summer programming. Now, that's not to say that this is going to happen on June 1st. We're in the exploration phase, but we know that that has been a message that's come through loud and clear. In our research and in our feedback that, A, childcare is very sparse in International Falls. But the other thing that comes with that, there is significant funding behind childcare. So, our grant writer is currently looking into that. We also have a staff member that is doing some deep-rooted research for the district. And she's done a phenomenal job in, in getting that data for us and what that process looks like for us. Future, I would say 26, 27, looking at even expanding our online offerings more. That is an application process that goes through the Minnesota Department of Education. When you're working with kids outside of your district. And then, the last bullet point on there is we are, I know Superintendent, former Superintendent Grover has started the conversation on a four-day school week. We're currently in the exploration phase like the other regional members that we partner with. And I know that Little Fork is in the process of exploring that. And they, we are about a month behind in our surveys. They have pushed out theirs, but our, our survey just went out to staff. But I want people to know that this is just in the exploration phase. We're going to look at pros and cons. In addition to, one of the conversations of topic that continues to come up is the childcare. And what does that look like for a school day? So, right now, we're in the exploration phase, we're working with staff. We'll be pushing out more information to the community to gather their feedback. And then, I'll be bringing the regional data back to the school board. And then, the school board can take a look at the results. Grant updates, we've got over a million dollars worth of grant applications out there. We should start hearing towards the end of March. If the district has been granted, we've got innovation grants, after-school programming, restorative practices, equity grants out there. And right now, we are looking at, we have special education grants that have been pushed out. So, we are just hoping we get that call that says we've received some of these grants. Ashley Hall's done an amazing job. She's worked with Beth Slutinsky, Janessa Belaski, the principals. There, there's just been an amazing group of people that have come together to push these grants. And then, obviously, our district office team for getting that data. We're almost done. School safety, the radios and receivers are here. We're just waiting for the installation of the rooftop receiver. So, we can talk to each other at the different schools in the event there was ever an emergency. We would be able to speak to the Bronco Arena, would be able to speak to, should the computer systems go down. So, we are very grateful for Falls Education Foundation. They have funded the radios and the receiver. And we are just waiting for the installation date. Full launch will probably happen at the beginning of the 25-26 school year. Updated school safety policy is getting ready to be launched. We just have some tweaks that we have to revisit when it comes to our ALICE framework. We have to embed the ALICE language. All of the students and staff have been trained. We just need to have policy alignment and then have our district attorney look at it. And then, we'll push out, once the board approves it, we'll push it out in our homeschool communication. And I will say the referendum group or the referendum presentation. But I just really want to say thank you to those who have worked behind the scenes in the referendum. School board, district stakeholders, to Nexus, community members. They, the process has been, really been incredible to go through. And it's daunting and overwhelming. But when people work together, great things happen for, for the cause. And I'm really, really excited about the traditions that we hold for ISD 361 as Broncos. But I'm also super excited at where we're going in the future. So, the referendum is going to really provide some positive change for the district. And I'm really looking forward to what the district looks like a year from now. So, thank you.
Where are we?
Beth, your days must be so boring.
No Tim Ringhofer today?
No, that, we have, our, our, at least our Missy and Tim have students finishing their last games, kids finishing their last games. So, yeah.
Plus, there's a hockey playoff game, a basketball game.
Yeah, working.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll do it, I'll motion.
Dale, second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Dale and a second by Tina to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
I have questions. Questions? The notice of desire to negotiate for local 4798?
Yep.
Is that the paras?
Yes. Yep, and they have to, they have to submit a letter. It's, negotiation year will be coming up.
Okay, because I was going to say, we just negotiated for two, a two-year. But okay, so they're doing an anticipation of getting ahead of it.
They have to submit their letters.
Okay, okay.
And I did, I'll, I did ask both groups to submit early. Because I, I want to have some collective conversation as a new superintendent.
Perfect.
Yeah, so you're going to see one come this one month and one come the next month.
Okay, very good, thank you for clearing that up.
Yes.
And then, well, there's some things, I always look at the accounts payable.
Go for it.
We talk about this all the time. I mean, there's just, I, and I know, like, there's a million other priorities. And I know with everything that's been going on in the buildings and everything. But there are some things in that we're paying every month that we need to look at. I mean, not only the water bill issue, but the, like, the copiers. And the, you know, stuff that we're paying for. And I noticed we're paying cell phones for just some different people. And like, we need to start looking at this stuff. And I know it seems nitpicky from a board perspective, and that's not what I'm trying to do. We have to be fiscally responsible to the community. And I think we owe it to our constituents to have these conversations. So, when you're ready, probably before the end of the school year sometime, we probably should sit down and just like go through the accounts payable one month. Like, line by line and just say, you know, what are we going to look at, basically prioritize?
I agree wholeheartedly. And I think that's one of the things that has been a positive out of becoming the supervisor of facilities. Is my ability to look at some of the things that are coming through. The supplies and copiers are number one on my priority list as we talk about the budget analysis. So, I agree. And I think there's just some things that we need to revisit so we can be better stewards of our, our dollars.
Awesome, okay, good. I just wanted to put that out there.
No, I appreciate the transparency.
Yeah.
And I guess I had a question. So, like, on the, I believe it was on the credit cards, like, there was, like, every transaction or whatever. And then, it would list, you know, who, who was or whatever. Are those like specific dollars that are like from a group or whatever? That's specific to that department for supplies?
Yes, so, as you know, there is a robust number of credit cards in the district. We have downsized it to approximately, I think, six.
Perfect.
So, one of the things that we are doing is we're streamlining it and trying to get a really deep handle on the departments, the dollars that are being spent. But what has happened now is all spending has to go into a purchase order prior to spending. So, it has to go through approval through the building principal or me first. Excuse me, it has to go through CISO first, then the building principal, then to me. So, it has three check marks before it's a go.
Okay.
But then, it comes from the right budget. So, like, for example, I asked Beth the same question because having prom, we're going to go, we're going to have to buy prizes, right? But we'll, we fundraised, or we will have fundraised, we have our own account. So, I said, how does that work? How do I go buy prizes for prom and have it come out of the prom money that we've raised? So, we've had that conversation, I had the same question.
CISO has recognized is that we need to scale, is some of the budgets and making sure that they're being coded to the right budgets.
Yeah. Yeah. I have the same question, Joanne.
Two questions, really quick. Did you say we are taking out the booster club?
For 25-26.
Not these, okay.
Not the remainder of this year.
Okay. And then, did we want to touch at all on the school calendar? The times that it was still on the phone?
Oh, yes, consent agenda. Yes, okay. So, school calendar, one of the things I wanted to update you, thank you for bringing that up because I forgot to put that in my presentation. So, the school calendar has been identified and the teacher union has looked at it. And they're in agreement to write an MOU. But one of the things that I have proposed, and I would like the board to support, is I would like to have an earlier start time for our school day. I, I would like to move from 8:30 to 8:00 AM. It would give us an additional half hour for instruction. Because our, we have so many students coming and going during the course of the afternoon. That we would be able to retain an additional 30 minutes of instruction. Now, is that difficult for some people? It absolutely is. 8:30 is one of the later start times for school districts. And one of the things that we are hearing is that when people have an eight o'clock job. They can have the ability to drop their students off and go to work. We have some students, because we don't start until 8:30, some of our buses are leaving significantly early. And we have some students that are waiting for the start of the school day for 45 minutes to an hour. And that could be outside, it could be in the cafeteria. Though it is, though it is a recommended change, obviously, the school board gets the ultimate say. But I have to remind you that just, we can work through the kinks. But it would offer 30 more minutes of teaching and learning. And it would offer better alignment to work schedules. With the possibility of hopefully moving forward to an after-school childcare in the future. But I'm, I'm open to questions.
So, if you start a half hour earlier, then does the date continue to go till 3:25 then, or?
So, on, I, so, we would, the, it would still be aligned to the contract. So, I think the, the staff would have to be here at approximately, was it 7:40?
It's on the bottom of that, the calendar.
Yep, and then, school would get out a little bit earlier. It still would get out earlier. It'd be over a half hour earlier.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it would correspond for the end of the day.
But it would alleviate a lot of the, that hour of behaviors and, you know. Because there is a lot of kids that.
Sit.
I live very close and my daughter would get picked up at 7:30 and be here by 7:40. It's a long time.
And then, my hopes is that we will, and Jeremy and I have talked about this and I know the concern has been brought to you. Is, is the volume of time kids are spending on the bus? Or the number of students on each bus route? You know, they're dropping off and then going, so we're going to try and streamline some of the transportation. So, we're serving more bus routes with more students. And maybe our care professionals, instead of having to be on the playground, they can be, they can be on the bus or within the cafeteria. But then, we would change drop-off times so students cannot be at school for 45 minutes to an hour. So, we would push it up, would drop off for families and our busing would take place.
Oh, good.
Because we've had times where staff have arrived at the school and there's been children outside. And that's unsafe. And so, by pushing this up, we think it would be, be helpful.
I literally called her and I was like, you know how hard it is for me to bring a 14-year-old to school at 8:30? No, you're selling me eight. So, I just noticed it right away. I, I was struggling with it, but I totally understand. Once you add up those instruction hours that are missed by like kids in sports, it's huge.
It is huge.
And early out?
No more early outs then?
More early out.
No, early outs would still take place.
No.
Yes? No, that's a four-day school week.
Sorry.
Then there's, then there's an early out. That's not on the table, four-day school week's not on the table. Early outs would still happen as of right now.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Rox. Can you, me, this Rox, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, question about, two things. One, I know Beth, you said we, previously that we had, the reason we changed the school schedule was because we did have more teaching minutes. I think, I think I'm quoting you right, more teaching minutes than was necessary in the past. But now, we're going to add some more teaching minutes. I know that you changed, you adjusted that with the school schedule. And now, we'll have more teaching minutes again, and am I correct in interpreting it that way?
No, can you hear me, Roxanne?
Yeah.
So, we would start the school day a half hour earlier. We would end the school day a half hour earlier. So, the minutes would remain the same.
Oh, okay.
The students, it would just allow for more instructional minutes for our athletics and our activities. And when our students depart for those events.
Oh, okay, that's where the added instructional minutes came in. Okay, sorry, you were cutting out a little.
No, that's okay, thanks for asking.
So, then, in addition to changing the, the, things like that. And I know this is probably seen as minor to some people. But I remember when Brenna had see lunch and she wasn't eating until one o'clock. That is late for lunch, especially when they get here at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
So, is that, some of that going to change too then?
So, the administrators and I will revisit, all schedules will revisit, like, what does breakfast look like? What does the drop-off time look like? What do our lunch schedules look like? So, I would say the answer to that would be yes, if our students are coming earlier. Making sure access to breakfast, there's a good window of time so every student can eat, should they choose when they get to school.
Right.
But that's, that's a great point. And I'll make sure to mark that down.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? No? All right. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion here. All right, we'll move into action items. Under improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. The resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tony? Jessica? Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the golden objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD number 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations or grants received by the school district. PCA, PDIS donation to FES and FHS, paid for admissions to girls hockey game, 750 and 500. paid for admissions to girls hockey game, seven fifty and five hundred. Bronco football booster charter buses, two thousand. Bronco baseball boosters, booster-paid coaches and driveline supplies, five thousand one hundred eighty-nine, eighty-eight cents. Bronco swim boosters, paid shipping on purchase, three hundred sixty-six dollars and five cents. The Cozy Abode, a hundred glow necklaces and glow flashlights for the ECFE Valentine's Dance. Dylan Strife with King of the Road Entertainment, DJ and light show services for ECFE Valentine's Dance. Arrowhead Library System, Sissy Mary Sue Education Foundation, book for students, Where Wolves Don't Die by Anton Truver. Arena scoreboard sponsorship, chocolate mousse, five hundred dollars, and Beyond Aesthetics, five hundred dollars. Do I have a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is declared adopted. And number two, implementing data-driven teaching practices.
Joanne.
Oh, sorry, I missed one. Open bidding, sorry. Yeah, I missed it. Open bidding for school photos for the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school years. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Jessica? Second?
Second.
Bruce? Discussion?
Does the RFP come out for that, or how does?
The Office of the Superintendent will push that information out. Our contract with Light Touch is up at the end of this school year. And I, I believe it's in the best interest of the district to reopen the bids to revisit school photos.
All right, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Number two, implementing data-driven teaching practices and staff collaboration to increase student academic success. Approve new CISTs, or Student Information System, Infinite Campus for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion. This rocks, we're all seconded.
Oh, all right, we'll do a motion by Tony and second by Rox. Any discussion?
So you said this is gonna be cheaper in the long run than what we've got? Okay. I was thinking about the dollars.
No, I appreciate that.
And more efficient.
And more efficient. That's huge.
Yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Under three, maintaining our facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for use by students and the community. Nexus review approval of Bronco Stadium improvement bids.
So you are up, and thanks for your patience.
So, bid pack one that we have is for the Bronco Stadium. We received pretty good bid coverage. I mean, it's a smaller bid pack that we had. We had good coverage for Work Scope one and three, a lot of local, local contractors that did bid it.
Good.
Work Scope two, we only had one bidder. It was for the HVAC and plumbing work. And basically, this was Shannon, which is another local, I think you guys use for the school as well.
Yep.
And we did talk to two other contractors, and they were like, it's too small of a scope, we can't be competitive with Shannon. So that's basically, they were like, we'll build your other projects when they're bigger. But basically, they were like, it's not worthwhile for us to bid it. So that's why we did see one. And then I'll honestly, like, when we compared budgets, all that stuff, there, it's a minimal savings even if we had a more. So the one thing I want to say is, all three that we would suggest to award to, which would be Up North, Shannon, and Panther Electric, all of them are your local contractors. And I believe the school uses all three of them, right?
Yes.
Couple things I just want to call out with this is, it's smaller scope, so we knew that we would be paying more, it would be over budget. We kind of went in knowing that. Did we know it'd be this much over budget? No.
How much over budget is it?
There's, I think you guys have a sheet in there that does state. So we are over budget. Oh, you don't have that one?
No.
It's one that I sent you. So it is over budget, about three hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, it's significant.
And I can kind of walk through some of the reasons. So I do have that. So how it originally happened was it was kind of just gonna be lipstick on this project. It was gonna be very minimal scope. What happened is it then grew to, let's remove some abandoned equipment, which some of that was abandoned water heater, plumbing piping, that was, that goes with water heater. Abandoned hot water storage tank and the piping valves and fittings that go with it. Reconfigure mortar walls for ADA cold compliance. Renovate the public restrooms, the official area, nicer flooring, nicer shower area. And then this was gonna be planned to be with the other bid packs, so basically, like, we were gonna bid it with the middle school, high school, or bid it with the arena where, you know, so it would be kind of bundled together. And it was decided to do it earlier, to kind of get the excitement, have it done before football season, football season, and then have that excitement of, look at what's coming, guys. You gotta, you know, here's just one piece of what's coming. You know, it, yeah, that is a great idea, but.
But all the stuff that you mentioned was in the original scope.
All of it, no, there was not. The, the public restroom was not part of it.
Yes, it was. I had that argument when we were on the phone with Nexus, and it was definitely in the original scope.
Okay, I bet, what I was told it wasn't, so I'll bring that back and have conversations. So, I mean, we could move forward with this, being so far over budget. There is bond. So with the bond premiums and everything, there is coverage of this, where we can take from it, and we do have a contingency. So there is right now a contingency of one point seven million out there still, even if we take this to cover for this bid pack. There's that option. There's the option that we can also, this is a public bid, so if we want to rebid this, you have to change scope. You'll have to edit it and rebid it. So there's that. I mean, you can award this and then value engineer, but you just never see the same credit. So keep that in mind. So.
Can we go back to these ones and tell them to sharpen their pencils a little bit?
You don't really see much, but that's where I said we could do some value engineering and stuff, but you won't see the, the same thing for the buck. You'll, you'll want to do more of an edit of the plans, change some things in the plans. You can bundle it then with, say, the arena, or say, with this, when we do the middle school, high school, so we could put it out with the bid in March. But the likelihood of being able to get it done before football season, I don't know if that would happen in time. That's a big problem.
What's the first option again?
What is the first option?
Dipping into the contingency.
Yep. Because you guys do have the, you guys have good interest from your bonds. Because even if you take the interest from the bonds right now, you are at, you still have one point seven million still in contingency. And then just to add on just a couple of the things here, so I know like you have the big looming sprinkler project that's out there. So they have done a couple of things, so to plan for the sprinkler. They have changed some of the steam radiation and replacing it with hot water radiation, so that will keep the cost down so that way to pay for the sprinkler work. There's some other alternates out there that possibly could help pay for that sprinkler work. And then they really, there's nothing that has appeared off scope on the other projects so far that will drive price to go off budget as well.
So, here's where I'm at, Joanne. Can I?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm not comfortable with our first project dipping into our contingency for three hundred and some thousand dollars. That's ridiculous. I would be comfortable going back to these contractors, being that they are local, and being that this is a school and part of a referendum, and telling them that this is, we're way over budget, and have them recommend to us what we could do to cut some of this off of here, without reducing the general scope of the project. You have to understand, this isn't cities contractors, okay? This is, and I know it's a whole different mindset when you're working with small home contractors. I can tell you, if I called Dave Harder at Up North Builders and said, Dave, we're three hundred thousand over budget on this project, like, let's sit down and look at the scope, and what can we do to kind of maybe cut that down a little bit, and he'd sit down with us and do that. And I'm sure Shannon's would, and I know Panther would too.
I think, oh, they all will, but I think you are gonna see, you're gonna see that your scope will be cut.
Obviously, something is gonna have to be cut back, but I'm not, I don't want to go into it, because I don't know anything about construction and the costs. I want them to tell me what they can do to reduce the cost, and what we could take off, and what we could, you know, maybe we don't need to use this specific fitting for this, or these toilets, or the flooring, or the this, or the that. I don't want to say, we're not gonna do the public restrooms and just take it off the board, because I don't know anything about the cost of all that stuff. I want them to tell me.
Tiling over the shower, and like, this was brought up in our college earlier, you know, and just, we could do the.
Epoxy.
Yeah, and just keep it simple there. I mean, yeah, they could give us great ideas to do it, but I'm just saying that you are gonna see some of your scope be removed. Just be warned on that.
If it's basingry block over tile in the boys' showers for the football team, I think that's okay.
Yep.
I don't see that as a reduction in scope.
Longevity in the long run.
Exactly, and you're still gonna have nicer showers and the availability of showers where we don't have them now. And you're gonna have public restrooms that's not a trough, and.
Nicer public restrooms.
Yeah, and bathroom doors where you're not sitting on the toilet looking at the person that's next in line. Like, that's the important stuff that we need to address.
So you'd rather go down the path of talking.
That would be my recommendation. That would be my recommendation.
Because I don't feel we need to rewrite the bid, or, you know, rebid it.
Redo the plans and.
Right, no. Because that costs money too.
Try to value engineer with these contractors and.
Right.
Try to get this going forward as soon as possible.
And is that, that's an option for us, and what would that process look like?
We can try. We can try and see what they.
Otherwise, we would have to push back and then add it into everything, so it would be delayed.
Yep.
All right, Dale, you had a question?
Well, I don't know if I'm on here, but. Yeah, I am now. Okay.
Rox, you're next. Dale's up.
For Nexus, I'm sorry if I interrupt, I can't hear real well sometimes, but is that's gonna cost us additional dollars with payment to Nexus?
If we went back and redid the plans, yeah, it would.
Yeah, so there you go, there's more money.
Right, are we gonna gain then?
Yeah, I want to hear what Dale has to say.
Yeah, well, my, my opinion is, is the opposite. I think we need to go back and look at the scope. I mean, we're two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars over on a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget. I mean, that's almost double. So, and if we're gonna take significant money out, instead of just massaging a little bit, and, you know, a couple thousand here and there, we gotta look at the scope.
I know.
And I agree with you. You know, I can't see, if we're jumping to the contingency on the first portion of the project, which is really small, we're, we're going down that path all the way. And if we have to delay the, the completion of the project, I think that's, you know, something we need to do.
Can we look at the scope with the contractors, do the valuation, whatever you called it?
Of engineering.
Yeah. So I, Dale, I guess, I think we're probably kind of saying the same thing, like, look at the scope from a contractor's perspective, so they can tell us.
The contractors come back and say, all right, instead of putting in this kind of tile, you could do this and save a few bucks here.
Yeah.
When you look at the scope, you're looking, saying, okay, we're not gonna do the shower, say, for example. We're just gonna leave them as is, or the restrooms are what.
See, and I'm.
And that's, that's where you're gonna save the money. You're not gonna save much by going back to the contractor.
Yeah, but every little bit counts that you save, and.
Yeah, but I mean, you're looking at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's significant.
I know, but I'm still interested to hear what the contractors would say.
Three hundred and twenty thousand over budget.
Three hundred and twenty.
So where it says.
Oh, three hundred and twenty over budget, okay, okay.
Twenty.
Yep, okay, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I read the numbers wrong. So it's even worse.
Sorry.
That's okay.
My, my feeling is that's very significant, and I don't know how we can justify that. I mean, we're talking about a facility that's been at least five decades.
Oh, longer than that.
It is, it's, it is what it is today, to this, to this moment. And we've survived, which, which is not saying we shouldn't do something, but three hundred and twenty thousand dollars over budget, I can't, I can't swallow that. I just can't.
That's a lot.
And then, I mean, and we can go back, and we can redraw, we can definitely scale it back.
Time out, though.
But, I mean.
That also costs money, you guys.
Right, but I also feel like what we were doing was pretty minimal scaling back just to what we needed. It wasn't like we were going above and beyond.
Exactly, I agree.
And I don't know if there is gonna be an added cost to do a redraw. This wasn't a big, big set of plans or anything like that. I think there's like five pages, or maybe exactly, slightly on that, but it's not a lot of pages. So I don't think that there is.
No, and you're, and you're taking things out, so you're just crossing mock, you're not adding anything.
Yes. But the, the one thing.
What about the referendum itself? If we have made some sort of commitment in order to pass a referendum, does that put us in any kind of jeopardy if we make a major change to the scope?
Yes. Because I'll tell you what, I did presentations all over this community, and I talked about redoing the public restrooms and the locker rooms, and the, so. It was in the original scope, and. I would be willing, I'll call Dave Harder and say, what can we, we gotta scale, like, we gotta do something here, but, you know, I mean.
So I think what I'm hearing is we're all in agreement that we are not going to move forward with anything tonight. Would that be fair to say?
Yes.
Yes.
So then, I agree. I, I think it's very important. Nexus knows how I feel. I shared an email with you today. We have to stay with what we promised the taxpayers that we would do. In addition, we cannot forget, with the construction change came the additional price to the district of the sprinkler system. So I think it's very important, as much as I want to see us move forward with the stadium, so our players can get ready to go, we have to adhere to what we said we would do. And I think we're all in agreement to that, so. What would the best next steps be? Would that be for you and I, and maybe our facilities team, to get together? And talk about next steps? Because we do have a facilities committee, that's, that's, I mean, I think we know what everybody's feelings are tonight, and then we find out. Because I, I do agree to some extent on the scope. We have to make sure, especially when we know that there's gonna be places we're gonna go over budget, and I, I feel strongly about if we're gonna push a little bit, it has to be within the teaching and learning space.
Agreed.
And so, but we also want to adhere to what we said we would do. So I would encourage the board to consider bringing the original team back together with Nexus and talk about next steps, because we can also hold a special meeting next week if we have to, but I think we better take it slow so we can go far.
Yeah, I totally agree.
I agree too.
Well, I, I think, I disagree, sorry.
That's okay.
I think we should get together without Nexus, review what our commitment is versus what, what we, what out to bid, and see where the mismatches are, if any. Can we make any changes? And then come back and, and have Nexus look at it.
We can do that too, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And then I, I just want to state, so we have this seventy-five percent budget review as well on the, on this portion, the middle school, or the high school, sorry, I heard you guys don't call it middle school, high school. I'm told that as a taxi driver. So we have that review as well, just to make sure that we're aligned with what we had put together, everything. So we have that review, I think that's scheduled for next week.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
So we'll see that as well, and we can see where we're aligned on that as well.
Perfect.
And so we'll be able to look at the numbers there, also?
Yep. Perfect.
So, question. So the overage you're saying is from, like, just removal of old equipment?
All those things that I listed, that I had mentioned.
Right, okay.
So there was abandonment of old equipment, there was reconfiguring of walls for ADA cold, cold compliance, renovating of the public restrooms, the official area, nicer flooring, shower area. And then, basically, we pulled it out as a standalone project. It is a smaller project, which we do drive up the cost.
Okay, so, yeah, can I, I guess, if, if we put this, I'll say, back with the other projects pumped together, do we have an estimated savings of what that would be?
Um, I believe, they just said it might save like five percent. I mean, it wasn't gonna be huge, it wasn't gonna be huge cost savings, no.
Okay.
I could probably get a crew together on the weekend to take all that abandoned stuff out of there and get rid of it. I mean, seriously, we don't, we don't have to pay anybody to do that.
I mean, I was also told by Shannon's, you know, like, if there's a lot of plumbing pipe that isn't even, um, insulated that might be called out, that's existing, that, you know, we don't have called out to be insulated right now, that, you know, the inspector comes out and might call us out to do that, and that would be a change order that's been added cost and.
But they drain the water in the winter, so why does it matter?
It's a code. It's code, it's energy efficiency.
I'm trying.
I know, it's okay. All right, well, yeah, so I think we just need to see, cause I'm guessing that to move walls, you have to remove some of the old equipment, so it's kind of a.
Right.
Catch twenty-two. You can't do one without the other, and you have to be compliant, so that's gonna be hard, but yeah, I, I guess I would like to see how sharp we can get pencils.
Agreed.
Can you tell us what the timeline might look like? Like, how long are these bids good for, what is our window?
Bids are good for forty-five days. Um, I do wanna tell you, talking with these three contractors, there are long lead time items, like the panel, the, um, light fixtures, doors, and frames, um, partitions, and showers. Those are long lead time items. I believe football season starts a little early this year?
August.
Okay, I thought it was even earlier than that, I thought I heard July.
July, well, they do.
They, they, on the backside of the school, they practice, at the stadium.
At the stadium, first game's ended.
So, I mean, so then we could push out this, you know, cause right now I have it, you know, being done in May. So we could push it out, you know, the start date and the end date and stuff, if they're not gonna be in there until August. So that's just the one thing I wanna call out is if we push out, just remember.
Right.
All that stuff, so, but bids are good for forty-five days.
Okay. And when did we receive the bids?
Uh, we opened them last week.
Right, okay.
On Wednesday, I believe it was.
Right, okay.
So we need to decide quickly.
Thirty-eight days.
Time goes by.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we both can go and do our homework, if that's the path we wanna take. You guys talk with your facility committee, and we can do our homework and do diligence as well.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.